If you can properly mitigate it and get it like signed off, get it mitigated by somebody that's bought in the bank of the east is, you know, there's not going to turn then. But the other thing becomes what's the sources black though? Because that's going to also play. So if you have resources, you have the water issue, they're going to want the water issue fixed.
Yeah.
I mean, a leak or something, they don't want that fixed before.
They're walking around, you see nothing.
Yeah.
Hey Dennis.
Well, you know how.
Any of these speakers and Michael.
They're online.
Yeah.
In the garage.
Yeah, see, I'm getting that.
Yeah, if you look down my side, right across from the other nuts.
What's this thing on?
The nuts were like next to me and then it comes. Yeah, they're gold.
I'll, I'll see if that, I think I got rid of it.
I reviewed everything.
But I swear it's far there.
All right, let me, uh, I'll get Jane to do a test run.
Testing. Jane, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Jane?
All right.
Oh, yeah, I definitely hear that.
Dennis, come to the door, Dennis.
Hey Jay, can you do a, uh, test run for us? No, I muted the speaker on the rim.
I'm going to go on the rim here and say it is better than here.
Why?
Oh, we need to be coming out.
I don't care. I don't even try to cut that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
There, are you here? We can hear you.
What is he coming out? Is he coming out of the lab? Because I have these, I need to. Hello? Yeah. Real bad. He's coming out of there. Yeah. I can't work under these conditions, bro. I can't work under these conditions. God, I need to lose some weight, man. You gotta give me some room. Until I can hear it out of the dead body, it's definitely going to happen.
You know, we've seen we get the grab on.
I got the no lock here. Yeah, I think we're not going to get it. We have both monitors. So if I turn this back up, now it's coming out that monitor. So we're going to go to both monitors. I only know those are probably the two. Should we do that? Should I should be? I think so. Thanks for the, uh, uh, speakers real quick on that.
Hey Jay, can you give us the test cut?
Say something? Yeah, there it is. Okay. Jake, can you hear us?
See, I don't think you're getting it with Jay because she's either J or I'm like, who is it?
Yeah, I know, but it should. Jake. You guys must be just.
Okay, you're fired.
Here's why. We've got the audio playing.
Maybe spend some of my money on an IT set.
There, there.
We can't spend any of your money because you're spending it.
Is that better than that? It is. It's just your, that's your hand. You gotta mute your.
Yeah, there's nothing here.
Oh, oh. What about that? That's, that's, it's gotta be true. I have to, I have to. That is mute. Got to mute. Your microphone is muted. There. That was, that probably.
Hey Jay.
Can you hear us?
Jay, can you hear it?
Yeah, all the microphones are muted. Yeah, the microphones that are going into Zoom are muted. The only microphones you have right now are going into Apple's screen. This isn't bad, it's, it's yours. You don't have audio, any audio that works through that, the feed into that. But normally you can hear us with that microphone. Yeah, it's music. So we can unmute that one. Jake, can you hear us?
I can hear you and now I can see you.
Okay. That's not, uh, that can hit without it. I would have had that take five minutes to go, but.
Nobody asked me that.
Yeah. Next time, next time, just let the mayor take care of it. We're good, we're good.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order, the mayor and board of commissioners for March the eighth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Braun?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Shepard?
Here.
Commissioner Mourning?
Here.
Let the record show you have a forum.
Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, Lord. I ask that you watch over our citizens. I ask that you watch over our elected body and their families, Lord. Please be with us as we are here this evening. Please watch over our police department and our first responders. Please be with us in Jesus's name, amen. All right. First order of business is resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero four, which is the appointment of a board of zoning appeals. Town administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do. So essentially, just like the last meeting, we're trying to fill vacancies on the board of appeals. And what you have before you tonight is a resolution that would appoint Susan Hemmer to the board of appeals to fill an unexpired term, um, until, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. If you're good with that, we can read it into the record.
Please read it in the record.
Okay. So we'll skip the boilerplate at the beginning, um, go to the fourth whereas, whereas this chapter contains Article Two titled Organization of Government, which establishes the various responsibilities of the mayor and commissioners, creation and structure of various staff positions, appointed consultants, departments, and appointed boards that handle the day-to-day administration of the town government is set forth by the annotated code of now and town, charter and town code. And whereas this article contains section two dash two oh nine titled Creation and Administration of a Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, which further establishes the creation of a Board of Zoning Appeals and further establishes the membership, terms of appointment, removal, vacancy, meetings, rules of conduct, and records. And whereas there are currently two vacancies on this five-member board, and whereas a Miss Susan Hemmer has stepped forward to volunteer to serve on this Board of Zoning Appeals and to fill the vacancy of one of these positions, and therefore the mayor and commissioners wish to appoint Susan Hemmer to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to serve in this position until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun pass approved and adopted this resolution on this eighth day of March, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero four?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? On behalf of the board, we do want to thank Miss Susan Hemmer for volunteering her time to serve on our Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero five, continuation of reward for trash contract. Town administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do. Um, essentially what this is, is, um, as you're aware in the past, we typically award multi-year contracts to the trash hauler. You get a better economy of scale on the bid price when you do that. A four-year contract expires on July first of, uh, this year. However, the contractor notified us about a month and a half ago that what they are seeing in the bidding world is that the prices are going up significantly. And our contract does allow us to issue, uh, year-to-year annual renewals and not have to put it out to bid again. So what the contractor was suggesting is that he could give us a, uh, better price if we were to just continue with the contract that we have. Now, he had cited about a month and a half ago that he was looking for probably about a twenty-five percent increase in cost. And originally, uh, Judy and I, the, the assistant town administrator, we were going back and forth on whether or not we thought we'd go ahead and, um, uh, just go out and, uh, advertise for a bid on it, uh, submit an RFP. However, when we started to think about it with all the uncertainty in the world today, especially with, you know, the Ukrainian situation and the sanctions that were seen done and the incredibly rising cost of gas that is going on, um, we would essentially probably put this out to bid and expect people to try to predict where the gas prices are going to be two, three, and four years from now. And that could be a real roll of the dice and not serve the town very well. So what we are recommending, and that's what this resolution, um, suggests, is that we just, um, continue the contract going forward. Um, it, it has a total cost for, uh, curb-to-curb pickup. It's a forty-three percent increase in the cost of the curb-side pickup. So what I mean by that is right now, we pay about a dollar sixty-nine each week for each trash can that is collected and a dollar twenty-seven for each recycling can that is co- collected. The recycling costs basically stayed the same. The trash went up forty-three cents, so we went from a dollar sixty-nine to two dollars and forty-two cents. Um, so that's a forty-three percent increase. But it's, it, it ends up not being too bad compared to what we budgeted in the, uh, at for this year because we made a lot of cuts and have really identified a lot of properties, quite frankly, that may or may not have been getting trash picked up or not paying the fair share of the trash. And what I mean by that is you guys know that we move the trash collection from the utility bill right to the real estate bill. But if there are properties that have more than one, and we're going to call them rental units, if they have one rental unit in them, then the real estate bill picks that up. But if they have more than one rental unit in it, now you go from one rental unit having one trash can to two rental units having another trash can and a third one for a third rental unit. And so they were actually slipping through the crack and not necessarily paying their fair share for those because it had all been moved to the real estate. And we knew that to some degree because we have captured other properties. But over the past couple of years, we've been able to get into these properties and through gathering information, have found a lot more rental properties, um, than used to be. As you also know, we took over a lot of the in-house billing, in-house a couple of years ago when we brought all the finances in. So we have a much more astute, a tenor, you know, paying attention to what we're seeing in our utility billing system. So, you know, thanks to Judy, she's been able to find a lot of properties that actually were not paying the fair share in trash collection. So although it is a forty-three percent increase, when you look at the total budget increase from what we budgeted last year to what will be coming into this year, it's a, it's well less than forty-three percent. So with all that said, we're making the recommendation of let's not roll the dice, let's lock it into the rate now. Um, so that's what that resolution, um, talks about. Um, Jay, I, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in on this because I had asked you your opinion and what you had been seeing in your other towns, and you gave me some interesting information the other day.
Sure. Um, well, commissioners, mayor, that, this is happening across the state, not only is fuel prices, but labor prices and recycling prices have just gone through the roof. And so my other clients that have bid this out have all elected to extend their contract, at least in the short term, because the, the uncertainty required the bidders to bid so high that it was off by factors of like thousands. For example, one came in at a million dollars and the next closest bidder would be like three million dollars for something they were paying maybe eight hundred thousand for right now. So, uh, this is the smart move in volatile time, and you can do it under your contract, and that's what we recommend.
Please read it into the record.
Okay. Again, we'll jump to the, um, fourth whereas, whereas the town provides for the collection of trash and recycling for certain properties within the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun. And whereas the town previously awarded a contract for the collection of trash and recyclables under a four-year contract that was awarded and commenced on July seventh, two thousand eighteen. And whereas the contract also had a provision that the contract could be extended by mutual agreement of both parties. And whereas, given the current state of the war in Europe and the impacts on the state of the economy and ever-increasing cost of fuel, it has been determined that the town would be better served in the current volatile market to have a shorter contract commitment and focus on the possibilities of a new long-term contract over the next twelve months. Therefore, be it enacted and resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun wish to extend the existing contract with Waste Management Incorporated Delaware for an additional one-year term started July first, twenty twenty-two. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners introduced, passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this eighth day of March, twenty twenty-two.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
But we need a motion.
Sorry, motion?
So moved. Okay, sorry.
It's been moved a second?
Yep.
It's been moved and seconded? Now, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. All right. Moving into citizens' input, would anyone like to speak this evening? Okay. Moving forward into staff reports, town administrator.
Um, one of the main things that I want to do is at the last meeting, um, you guys accepted the recommendation from the planning commission to move forward with those two ordinances that would make changes to our zoning code. Um, we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in the advertisement and making sure that everybody's aware of it. So I'm not going to, um, read the whole public notice, just the important parts of it to give people that are watching this live stream another opportunity to be aware that we are having some upcoming public hearings. So we have a notice that reads, "Public notice is hereby given that the mayor and commissioners shall be holding a public hearing at the Community Fire Company of Rising Sun located at three hundred Joseph Biggs Memorial Highway on Tuesday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two at seven PM. The purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment on two ordinances up for consideration by the mayor and commissioners. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh one titled Amending and Creating Zoning Districts is an ordinance that will amend existing zoning districts while also creating new zoning districts as recommended in the town's two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan update. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh two titled Comprehensive Rezoning Phase One is an ordinance that will amend the zoning classification of certain properties as recommended in the town's two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan update, and is summarized below." So you basically have fifteen locations that are being considered to have the zoning reclassified here. Um, this is a public hearing. Uh, people can, um, view the, they, they can view the meeting, uh, later on that evening. The best way to see what's going on is to actually come to the hearing itself later on that night. Um, it, uh, the recording can be uploaded, uh, to our YouTube channel. Um, we are asking that anyone wishing to offer comment to contact us by the close of business on Monday, March twenty-first, to let us know that they'd like to speak about the ordinance. It doesn't matter if you're for it, against it, or just want to offer some comments. We're just asking that you let us know so we can plan accordingly for how many people that we're, uh, gonna need, uh, to prepare for at the firehouse. Um, you can contact Judy Melton, uh, by email or call Town Hall. And as always, um, we have copies of the ordinance on our website. You can find them. And if you have any questions, please contact us between now and the hearing, right up to the hearing, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have on it. Um, the other, uh, two things I'd like to bring up is we have three building permits for the construction of three new houses in town. Uh, two of those houses are lots six and seven in the Maple Heights development. Um, if you remember a couple of months back, um, we were talking about the previous developer had changed the zoning on those lots from residential to commercial, so he needed to come in and get a special exception. The planning commission met on that special exception on January tenth, but because of snow, some cancellations on the applicant's side, and some outbreaks of COVID, the board of appeals was not able to meet until this past Thursday, uh, March third. And they did recommend, um, granting the special exception for the applicant to proceed with the construction of the two residential homes. Now, the applicant is, does have to, um, answer some questions from County Stormwater because there were some issues regarding the plans that were submitted to County, uh, Stormwater, so that still needs to be addressed. The other thing is I met with the, the, um, owners of Buck's Restaurant. Uh, Gary and I met with them late, I guess, last week. We had a really good meeting with them about some real exciting things they want to do down there at Buck's Restaurant. One of the things I found very interesting is that, um, because obviously it's in a floodplain area, and there are things that we are learning that we need to pay attention to in the floodplain areas. And so we talked to the applicant about the way they're going to have to anchor that deck and anything they want to do and bring it up off the ground and all. But he showed me a water line on the front of the building, and that water line was twenty-three inches above the paved surface of the parking lot. So a significant amount of water did go down, uh, through and around in, through and around Buck's Restaurant down there. Um, so we're excited about what he's looking to bring to Buck's Restaurant. We also met with the individual who is renovating the old Sue's Restaurant. Um, he has a lot of, I'm excited about that investment, too. It's, it's really refreshing to get people who want to be here. And we've talked about this since I first came here, that I want to see us get to the point where people really want to be here and they want to invest. And we're starting to see that because of the excitement of what they want to do. Um, from my perspective, and Augie, I know you can appreciate this, when I broached the subject about putting fire sprinklers in there, he said absolutely. He said, "I am not making this kind of investment without putting fire sprinklers in there." And the reason why that's significant is a bad fire on Main Street five years ago had the potential to just completely take out Main Street. With all the renovations that have been taking place, we are gradually getting fire sprinkler systems in there. So that will protect the investments, the social investments that our community's making because everybody's excited about what's happening on Main Street. And to have a fire come along and wipe all that out could be devastating. So we've got another good, uh, property owner wanting to invest in Sue's Restaurant, too. Bottom of the Hill Grill, um, we met with the, uh, individuals that are taking that over. They're looking to open up a family-style restaurant and bar area. The thing that's really interesting about those conversations is they made it very clear that they want to hire family people because they just want to make sure that they have the right people involved and managing and not to be disparaging or anyway, but we know we've had a lot of problems in that location down there over the years. So fingers crossed that we'll be able to work with these new partners and we can get, you know, something that operates down there that is really beneficial and very successful. So we could have three big changes just in the restaurant world in the town of Rising Sun, maybe in the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days. The last thing I have, I want to turn it over to, um, the assistant town administrator, Judy Melton. But I just wanted to preface it by saying Judy's doing a lot of great things, especially in our public works department in terms of, we've got a good public work staff, and they're into a lot of things. We're having new fire hydrants installed all over town. We're, we're making a lot of headway. And Judy's done a really good job of organizing that, working with Grant and the guys, and she has, uh, a couple, uh, programs and initiatives she's got to put forward, uh, for the benefit of the elected body to have a, a good understanding of what's going on. So Judy?
I did have a very productive meeting today with, uh, the Public Works Forum and Grant Coats, and we talked about, uh, looking at having a document that would allow us to look at things that we're going to be doing futuristically as well as things in the next month or two. And this is, I, I gave you a document this, this week, and I'm going to update that every two weeks for you after my meetings with him so that you can see. It'll be a, a living document that grows, and we're going to be tracking time spent on different types of tasks so that at the end of any given period or year, we can sit down and say, "Well, what did it cost us internally to do our own, uh, sidewalk repair or our own black topping?" And we will have those numbers available for us to take a look at. Um, so as you can see, March and April are pretty much fleshed out, but the rest of the year looks empty. That's because it is a living document, and I'll continue to share with you. Um, like I said, a very, very good meeting with him today. Um, other than that, all of the other things are going along really well. So financials I'll have for you next meeting.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. Um, the officers responded to eighty-five calls for service in the last two-week period. There have been no significant trends. However, we are still seeing a increase in amount of violent calls. Um, just recently at Martin's, we had a call where a group of teenage men or young men, um, were assaulting each other with tire harns and, and things of that nature. Um, that's beyond what we typically see, and, uh, I attribute it to COVID because since.
The last thing I have, I want to turn it over to the Assistant Town Administrator Judy Melton. But I just wanted to preface it by saying Judy's doing a lot of great things, especially in our Public Works Department in terms of, we've got a good public works staff, and they're into a lot of things. We're having new fire hydrants installed all over town. We're making a lot of headway. And Judy's done a really good job of organizing that, working with Grant and the guys. And she has a couple programs and initiatives she's going to put forward for the benefit of the elected body to have a good understanding of what's going on. So Judy?
I did have a very productive meeting today with the Public Works Forum and Grant Coats. And we talked about looking at having a document that would allow us to look at things that we're going to be doing futuristically as well as things in the next month or two. And this is, I gave you a document this week, and I'm going to update that every two weeks for you after my meetings with him so that you can see, it'll be a living document that grows. And we're going to be tracking time spent on different types of tasks so that at the end of any given period or year, we can sit down and say, "Well, what did it cost us internally to do our own sidewalk repair or our own black topping?" And we will have those numbers available for us to take a look at. So as you can see, March and April are pretty much fleshed out, but the rest of the year looks empty. That's because it is a living document, and I'll continue to share with you. Like I said, a very, very good meeting with him today. Other than that, all of the other things are going along really well. So financials I'll have for you next meeting.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. The officers responded to 85 calls for service in the last two-week period. There have been no significant trends. However, we are still seeing an increase in amount of violent calls. Just recently at Martin's, we had a call where a group of teenage men or young men were assaulting each other with tire harns and things of that nature. That's beyond what we typically see. And I attribute it to COVID because since COVID occurred, we start seeing more violence. But in the same sense, we are not getting the firearms that we have been seeing people carry. So I guess one's good and one's bad. Just two other things, reminders that the Little League Parade is on April 9th. So be prepared for some disruption in traffic around town. And on the 23rd, the, of April, 23rd of April, the Tiger Trot, which is the 5K run through town. Also look for traffic delays and detours. And that's pretty much all I have for tonight. Unless there's some questions.
Thank you, Chief. Town Attorney, do you have a report?
Hey, good evening. My report will be brief. Calvin and all we gave you the updates for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I look forward to the hearing that we're going to have. We've been working hard on this comprehensive zoning and trying to carry out the intent of the master plan. I will be there in person for that hearing so that we can answer any questions that the citizens have and look forward to getting that done. So if you have any questions, you can catch me in person next two weeks from now.
You said in person, correct?
In person, that's correct.
All right.
What's your money running out?
Town Engineer?
The Town Engineer was not able to attend tonight, but he did send me a report. We have gotten authorization from MDE for the final payout for their portion of the grant for the Cheska Water Line. They withheld 5% of their grant, which is equal to, I believe, $25,000. So we just have to fill out the paperwork to finalize that. At the wastewater treatment plant, we've been, which is required, we've been performing some toxicity testing down there to make sure that our plant continues to operate above standard. I want to remind everybody, MDE gives grants out to wastewater treatment plants that meet what they're supposed to do, and they give you a little bit more money when you exceed what you're supposed to do. And we continue to exceed what we are supposed to be doing. So, you know, for people like Augie, you remember all the trials and tribulations of getting this sewer plant ran. You know, it was a good choice, and we're getting rewarded for that. We've also found another revenue stream through the Maryland Department of Emergency Management. It's called BRIC funding, and we're looking at that to maybe start looking at figuring out ways to decommission the lagoon. We all know that at some point in time, we have to decommission that. And we believe that it qualifies under the Maryland Department of Emergency Management as mitigating a hazard. So they've already asked us to send a letter to them asking for consideration. So we're setting up a meeting to meet with them on that. So as I've been saying, there's a lot of exciting things all going on at one time. The last thing, we are finalizing the specs and drawings for the water line and the broadband connect through the Royal Maryland Council grant that we got. So we're going to be getting ready to come before you folks to put that out to bid and then award the contract so we can get going on replacing those water lines over there and getting the broadband in. That concludes the engineer's report.
Thank you. Under the Mayor's report, just a quick reminder, the second Saturday in April, we are going to have our Spring Dumpster Day. And that's going to be from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We'll be sending out a reminder flyer in our water bill system. Just a reminder to help alleviate the cost of bulk pickup. The Town Board and myself have agreed to do a spring cleanout day and a fall cleanout day where residents that live within the town of Rising Sun can get rid of bulk items by visiting our public works yard and dropping them into large dumpsters that we have there.
What was the date again?
It's the second Saturday in April. All right.
Oh, wait a minute. Let's stop a minute.
Little League.
Little League. That is a horrible day to do that.
Okay, Judy, do you want to try to move it to the third Saturday then, since the second Saturday? Third Saturday is fine. We'll do the third Saturday.
April 16th, I guess that would be.
Okay. We'll have that reminder put out in our, in our next water bill system. Good call, Augie, yes. Senate Bill 362 is being heard in the Budget and Taxation Committee. If you don't know what Senate Bill 362, it's regarding our highway user fees and the fact that there is still a sunset provision in that document, which would basically go back to the low rates that we received back before the new bill was put into place. So there's a hearing tomorrow. I'm going to be writing my testimony in support of removing that sunset provision. The governor has also put forward a bill to try to get rid of that sunset provision so that we can continue to see increases in our highway user fees that we receive. I do want to say on behalf of the Town Board and myself, we are so excited to congratulate Tyler Garvin, who is the next state champion for wrestling in Rising Sun. Tyler won his championship, and we will be celebrating him. We've reached out to his parents, and I'm going to be leaning on Commissioner Shepherd to help me get a new name put on the state championship billboard. So we're excited to celebrate with Tyler and his family. I would be remiss also if I didn't say a special congratulations to Dr. Joe Widener, who is the Maryland State Physician of the Year. Dr. Joe will be celebrating 20 years here in the town of Rising Sun. I believe it's March 20th. We are so thankful for him and Stonerun Family Medicine. Reminder, Dr. Joe was also on our Emergency Management Committee. He helped us significantly during the early days of COVID-19. And we are so thankful that him and his practice are here in the town of Rising Sun. I would be remiss also if I didn't stop for a moment to recognize International Women's Day, which is today. Being raised by my mom gave me a special appreciation for the role of women. Here in the town of Rising Sun, we are so thankful for those that serve in specific positions, especially Judy Melton, and for all they do for the town of Rising Sun. Moving forward into Commissioner comments. Commissioner Braun?
I have no report.
Commissioner Pearson?
Oh, I've got a report. Calvin, can you get my picture?
Should.
This is your beach picture?
Oh, nah. I wouldn't do that to anybody. Well, as you can see, there's a problem. And it's not the tractor trailer that caused the problem. What you can't see until you look very closely is a white car in the second slot to make a turn going either straight on Queen or to left on West Main. Because of that and some other incidents lately, we are going to be instituting a "Don't Block the Box" program where a blue box will be painted that you cannot be in. Signs will be posted. We are going to get a camera, and the fines will be extremely hefty. And they get higher with the more times that you go through it. I have lived with the fire company yelling at me for years about this, but it seems to have gotten considerably worse. A personal, I was involved in this one, a woman blocked the intersection, and we not only blocked West Main Street, but South Queen Street, and no one could move, and she wouldn't. So that, this was the final straw. Where you see somebody tried to do that, and the worst part of it is the poor tractor-trailer driver, he can't move. So you'll get more information probably in the mailing. We're in the process, I have, I've already spoken to somebody about having the block painted. And so that you also know this is legal in the state of Maryland. So look for it, and don't be surprised if you get a summons, or not a summons, but a notice in the mail with a fine to it. We will publish everything, but it is coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Shepherd?
No report?
Commissioner Warnock?
We have another Eagle Scout project about to start in the park. We are, there's a section of the trail in Veterans Park that's kind of close to the stream. We're actually moving it further away from the stream. And it'll allow us to kind of connect to that bridge that's kind of like the bridge to nowhere down there by the basketball court. That was put in where it was for a reason. But we'll now be connecting that bridge to the trail system. And so that should be starting in the next, I would say, few months. And so I got to, Judy, I'll get with you on what our plans are for that because there's some work that I'll need to get Public Works to help with on that.
And there's new locks at the Dog Park?
Oh, we got the locks fixed this week. So the locks have been repaired at Dog Park. That's awesome. I get a lot of comments on that, so I'm glad to hear that. Okay, and with that, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Upcoming town meetings, March 22nd. Reminder, that is the public hearing at the firehouse. You can see on the agenda, the upcoming holidays, as well as the trash recycling and yard waste schedule. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.